I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion on that presentation? All in favor? The minutes are approved. Thank you. We'll proceed with warrants thirty-three and thirty-four. Mr. Price?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. If you take a look at the packet, I don't know if you can follow along with me on the warrant listing, if everyone is there. But I wanted to get into this because there's some interesting items here on this warrant. Okay. Looking at, this is thirty-three. Looking at thirty-three and thirty-four. On thirty-three, you're going to see a number of some big spending items and I want to point some of those out. At the very top, I believe, if we're looking at the same, but either way, there is a check for eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. That is the first payment on the new JCB loader that is at the transfer station. We'll get to more of that in just a second. There's twenty-eight thousand six ninety-three oh two for cushion construction. That's the road maintenance that has happened and another payment for that contract. Eighty-two ninety-five fifteen, that's health insurance. And salt we bought for six thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars thirty-six cents. You'll see a huge expenditure, thirty thousand two hundred sixty dollars and forty cents. That is the down payment for the JCB loader. And I would point out, just to make sure that people understand, that is money that the town had already set aside looking ahead for the eventual replacement of the BACO that was already there. So that gave us thirty thousand two hundred sixty dollars upfront for the purchase of that item. Regional school unit makes sense and the rest are fees. And so that is warrant thirty-three. And then warrant thirty-four is payroll in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Therefore, I would move to approve both warrants thirty-three and thirty-four in the total amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded to approve the warrant thirty-three and thirty-four in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents. Is there discussion questions on the warrant?
Just one for you, Dennis.
Ya voila.
The eleven thousand one eighty-five, that's the first payment on the BACO came from?
This is, is this the transfer station fund versus the replacement?
Yep.
Yes?
That came from transfer station reserve.
That's correct.
Capital reserve.
Yeah.
So none of this was new money. It was money that was already set aside for capital.
Yep.
And so that's forty, almost forty-two thousand dollars of the total purchase price was?
Eighty-nine thousand, I believe. No, it was eighty-two nine, that's right. It was the fifty-five plus the forty-two, yeah, with the financing costs. So, yeah, it was probably around eighty-nine thousand.
Okay, and so now we have four years left on a lease purchase agreement.
That's correct.
With payments of approximately eleven thousand.
Should be flat.
Which wouldn't be all ours because it's with the other towns too.
And it will, right, and that will be paid approximately fifty percent by Reed Field, twenty-five percent by Fayette, and twenty-five percent by Wayne.
That's correct, and we fill that account through an eight percent surcharge on operating expenses. Every year, that money gets rolled into the reserve account and it's worked out pretty well so far. We may have some future needs that need some additional attention or different more creative financing, but for right now, it's been a really beneficial approach for us.
And that's all according to our inter-local agreement for Fayette, Wayne, and Reed Field to use the Reed Field transfer station.
So it's basically working together to upgrade the equipment. If you are interested, as a side note, in discussion of taking a look at what the BACO looks like or when it, some of the performance things we posted, a profile on the Facebook page of the town about the particular model. And it looks like it is a dynamite little tank that will last us for a while.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second and some good question and discussion on it and follow-up information. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? The warrants are hereby approved.
And Dennis, I should have said that the full amount is circled in the warrant with the payment amount for the thirty thousand dollar check. So it's, it's in there. I just don't have the exact number in front of me, but I was going to report that it was all taken care of, but now I don't have to, so.
Select Board Communications, so are there any members of the Select Board who wish to make any announcement or point out anything?
Yes. I would just like to remind everyone, thank you very much. If you had a chance to look at this month's Messenger, it was out and it talked about our upcoming meeting for Heritage Days. Sunday, February twenty-third, we will be having our first meeting. I think we said one o'clock on that. And we will be talking about interested parties. If you're interested in helping us, we're looking for information about children's events, organizations that can come and help us, all kinds of things to make a great Heritage Days, August seven, eight, nine, August seven, eight, nine, Heritage Days 2020. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to staff reports. Eric, the floor's yours.
Thank you. I have just a brief oral town manager's report today. I was going to start by talking with the JCB, but I don't have to. That is a very exciting happening for us. We should be taking delivery not this week but next week. But it, we're waiting on Savannah, Georgia to send the equipment up our way, so that's that. The, we are conducting interviews for the transfer station and we'll be wrapping that process up this week. So that's for the assistant transfer station manager position. We have received a draft audit for the past fiscal year. And right now, we're scheduled for February eighteenth to have the auditors present to the Select Board, which is, I think, probably a full two months ahead of where we were last year. And I'm just very pleased to see this starting to roll out the way we had envisioned with a January completion date and reports in February. The, we've done some work to the town office here. Bathroom remodeling is taking place downstairs and upstairs. We are working to put in Phase One of our accessibility improvement plan for the building, which would be automatic door openers. My goal is to have the building fully accessible with those automatic door openers this year. Cost of ten to twelve thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, followed by two years of savings and then improvement to the parking lot in order to make that final piece of the process complete and have a fully accessible building. We do, we do have an obligation. I think it's been a long time coming, but I'm pleased that we're making progress. The, we are going to be closed on February seventeenth for President's Day. That's the town office and the library. The transfer station wouldn't be open on Monday anyway. And then the last thing I want to report is that we have two very important hearings coming up for ordinances and potential ordinances. The first would be a food sovereignty ordinance discussion, basically allowing folks in town to process and sell certain food items to their neighbors without having to go through the incredibly rigorous standards that the state of Maine has currently in place for kitchens. It allows people to maybe not have to buy a double basin stainless steel round corner sink. They can get away with using a kitchen sink if you trust them to do the right thing, and that's what that's about. That will be Monday, February tenth, at six o'clock, excuse me, six-thirty PM here at Guile Hall. Following that, at seven-fifteen PM on February tenth, we will have, be having a hearing on adult use and medical marijuana. And this is to consider the possibility of opting in to any number of those provisions that the state has allowed us to pursue if we choose to as a community. So a very open discussion about the issue at large and hopefully some more refined discussion about what, if anything, the community would like to see the Select Board pursue with respect to opting in to cannabis and medical marijuana in the town. So that's my report, and I'm happy to take any questions on that or anything else you might have.
I'll add a comment on the marijuana hearing. That is not a hearing on any specific ordinance or ordinance language. It is really merely, I would call it, setting the compass so we know where the community would like us to go and what we should pursue in terms of future ordinances in regards to that. Yes, Ralph?
Eric, question, refresh my memory, please. The ADA issue with the doors and the parking lots and all the rest, we're proceeding with the doors. I can't remember what we had budgeted for this fiscal year. Is there going to be an unexpendated balance? And if there is, I'm assuming we would encumber it against savings in the two out years before we finally tackle it again?
More or less, but what we had planned on doing was expanding out of the reserve. So in actuality, all we have is unexpendated reserve. We have around eighteen thousand we're going to spend, probably, I'll say, be a little bit conservative and say fifteen thousand of that this year. That's why we're looking at two years of savings.
To build the reserve back up?
We've already initially budgeted ten for this year. I'm hoping ten or fifteen next year, maybe twenty, in order to complete that process. But those ADA door openers will really make that path from that front door all the way in fully accessible. The bathroom downstairs, we have a brand-new sink that actually meets the requirements. We've made sure that the mirror heights, the grab bars, all that. So we've done a pretty thorough review and I think we're making really good strides.
I just know how surprised we were when the bids came in.
Yeah, we're going to try that again.
And hopefully, the savings process for, in those out years, to get us to the point where we want to be will, will reflect a better Kentucky windage to make sure that we have the money when it's time to actually do it instead of coming up short again.
Absolutely, that's the plan, yeah.
Okay, we're all set?
All set.
Okay. I would like to thank the following boards, committees, and commissions and departments for these, these minutes. Solid Waste and Recycling Committee for the minutes of July tenth and October sixteenth. Trails Committee Minutes for November twenty-six, two thousand nineteen. And the Cemetery Committee Minutes of December eighteen, and I'm assuming that's two thousand nineteen, not twenty-twenty.
They came from the future.
May I assume that?
Oh, I don't know.
I think so. I'd like to thank those committees for having those minutes and they're duly posted in the packet so other members of the public can read them. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Select Board? Okay, none. We will proceed then with appointments, reappointments, and resignations. Tonight, we have the resignation of Jim Schmidt from the Planning Board. And so we have a short note from him that it's been his honor to serve, that he is in fact resigning from the Planning Board.
I would make a motion to accept Jim Schmidt's resignation from the Planning Board with regrets.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to accept Mr. Schmidt's resignation with regrets. Truly, he's served the community very well. So any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Thank you.
Before you move on, this lady's here, I don't have her, we don't have her paperwork. She was going to be on Conservation. What were you going to be appointed to?
Conservation Commission.
Okay.
Does she have her application?
Yeah, it was in the folder. It came in kind of short. I didn't realize Deb had scheduled you, I'm sorry. So we wouldn't actually be able to make the appointment not being on the agenda, but we can.
Can we speak to her so she doesn't have to come back?
Let's do that, yeah, yeah.
So we can appoint you at the very next meeting, but we don't have the paperwork. Could you go up to the microphone and introduce yourself? And we're very simple here. You will, you will be approved to this commission.
Trust us.
It's just a matter of how the paperwork's going to flow.
Yeah, yeah.
And thank you for pointing that out, Christine. Hi.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Donaldson. I have applied for a position on the Conservation Commission. I'm very, very much interested in conservation. It's kind of a passion of, a passion of mine. And I've always enjoyed the outdoors and had appreciation for our natural surroundings. I have had a career in science and I've always been interested in science. And I've read as much as I could about the environment and about, you know, natural history and that kind of thing. And I've enjoyed several experiences of working with, in citizen science projects. I've done bird banding and I've done horseshoe crab tagging and what was, used to be called RBV, Rapid Bioassessment by Volunteers, where we would collect, we would basically judge the health of a stream by the presence, the numbers of and proportions of different riffle-dwelling benthic mackerel invertebrates. Yeah, if you can say that a few times fast.
And know what it means.
Well, it sounds like you have.
For example, I beg your pardon?
I was going to say, it sounds like you have a lot of experience and a great desire.
In what?
It sounds like you have a lot of experience and a great desire to work outdoors, so it sounds like a good fit to me.
So we're not going to appoint you this meeting, but you won't have to come to the next meeting when we do appoint you?
Okay.
So what we'll have is the paperwork will flow properly to us to the next meeting and we will go ahead and appoint you at that point. And you can start serving on the Conservation Commission. And my observation from the chair here is that you'll be a real asset to the community.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions of us?
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm sorry we didn't have the paperwork squared away. Sometimes that happens. So thank you so much and we'll make sure you get a call right after the next meeting, which will be in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you for volunteering. Thank you, Christine, for checking on that.
May I make one introduction? The minutes of the Cemetery Committee are.
Excuse me.
Are from 2019. That was just a typo on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Consider proposals for the fire station expansion and library roof projects. So this is a major discussion that we'll get into tonight. Last time we met on this, Christine talked about a relationship she had. So I want to just say that S.J. Wood built my home in the early nineties. I think it was ninety-two or ninety-three. And I don't think I've talked with Steve or anybody from his company for, since then.
That's probably a good thing.
That's just, just a disclosure.
And Chris, you said your brother?
My brother-in-law owns Sheridan.
Okay, all right. Okay. Well, those disclosures are very much appreciated and it's always a good way to start a discussion about awarding town projects. This has been a very collaborative process from the beginning. I want to thank the Select Board, the Budget Committee, the Fire Station, or the Fire Chief, the Library and the Library Board of Directors, our engineers from Derago and mainland who are here to answer any questions of a technical nature that we may have, and the public for supporting this at the June town meeting last year. We have been working diligently to move forward through the design phase and the request for proposal process. We did our very best to put together a package that we thought would get us the best results efficiently and cost-effectively. We had a few different things come up during the process. We had a delay, we've had other issues, but in the end, we had five folks provide proposals for us. As you noted, we did start that discussion last week. So the board was provided with copies of the proposals in their entirety as well as some of that initial discussion. To supplement that, I prepared a memo that's included with this packet that details some of the more necessary points of discussion in considering those five proposals that we did receive as well as a recommendation for an outcome that I think would be in the best interest of the town of Reed Field. I will say also that I appreciate Ralph's help specifically in working through this process. He helped attend meetings, go to site visits. He assisted with the reference checks and was always a good sounding board for this. So it was great to have that connection to the, to the board. In reviewing this, we set two things, or at least I set two things, as priorities. Cost and qualifications. And both of those things, I think, need to be taken with a lot of, a lot of weight. We intentionally pursued this as a request for proposals process as opposed to a straight bidding process because we wanted to have the option of placing more weight on qualifications because we're a small town and we, it's not always easy to get the responses that we want. So we need to have the ability at all times to understand who we're working with and act in the best interest of the town. So with this discussion about disclosure, we did have an imperfect proposal process. There were errors that came in with some of the proposals. And in my memo, I've tried to at least explain and address those in as much as possible. We can't, to the nth degree, take care of those things, but no bid process, no proposal process is perfect. There are always hiccups and catches. The ones that I saw in this process, I believe, are relatively minor. And I believe that the largest, which was the issue with incomplete proposals for submissions, excuse me, for equipment listings, I believe we addressed that in as holistic a way as possible in consultation with our town attorney and with the main municipal association to make sure that what we were doing was, in fact, the right way to proceed and the right way to get information that would lead us to a better decision and outcome for the town of Reed Field. And so we did ask the proposers to submit a revised set of equipment listings. Three of the five did. The two that did not, I would consider disinterested at this point. The three that did, I would say, in essence, met the, met the expectation. The other piece of this was an error in math in the S.J. Wood proposal. It was a, an internal error, so to speak. When we did the proposals, we asked for line items on a number of specific areas of construction, whether it was moisture barriers or framing or foundation work. And so there was an error in the mathematical side that related to one of those smaller areas on the fire station, but did not affect the overall subtotals. And that was evident at the opening and also evident when we had a follow-up email from S.J. Wood that explained that. I did include that in this packet as well. Also backing up briefly, I included the responses from the five, or the three, excuse me, contractors that submitted revised equipment lists. I will say also that Blaine Casey did submit a letter in addition to the equipment list expressing basically their, some of their concerns about the bid process and how it was approached. And I can certainly understand and appreciate that letter. I feel that we have adequately responded to most, if not all, of that through our bid process and the explanation provided in my memo. That being said, I wanted to make sure that was also out there as a public point. So moving on, we have gone through some of the errors that were in the process. And I will say that I believe that we've done our best and acted in good faith to address those holistically. And my recommendation to the board is that we not allow those to, in any substantive way, affect the decision-making process. They should be noted, they should be recorded, but I don't believe that, at this point, either of those is enough to disqualify any individual contractor. So I'll take a short break right there and ask if anybody has any questions on any of that before we move on to the discussion of the additional qualification review and the financial assessment.
Other questions?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. So the qualifications that we looked at included the equipment list as well as references from folks that have had experience, preferably municipal, not everybody does. We got a lot of college-type references and things of that nature. And so we did go through and make calls to at least two, and sometimes it ended up being three, and having communications directly with at least two, if not three, of the references provided by the contractors. That was, it was a very, I think, enjoyable process for me. I got to hear all the wonderful things that these guys were doing and girls to build community buildings and to help out municipalities. We asked the same three questions of all of the references, generally what their perspectives were. We asked what their experience was with staying on budget and also specifically how the change order process happened. Not a question of if, in most cases, but how and when it was handled. And so we've received mostly favorable responses. We did not receive exclusively favorable responses, but mostly. And so I don't want to get into those specifics in a public meeting. However, I will say that those reviews and discussions were reflected in my recommendation at the end of this process. The other piece of this is the financial consideration. And we have been working with budgets that have been changing and honestly having to stretch a little bit to find a way to make this happen. However, I think that what we had for proposals came in better than what we had expected considering some of the previous work that had been done with the proposal process for the library roof when handled individually. That gave us a bit of a scare. The numbers that we had come in for the construction phase for the library and fire station were more than we would have liked, but of the five proposals that came in, two can be accomplished with the proposal, the proposed budget that we're currently working with. And that's a good thing. That means that we have the ability to look objectively and make a decision that includes the financial piece as an option. So I would recommend that we move forward in that respect. The two proposals that came in under the current budget were S.J. Wood and Blaine Casey. S.J. Wood had a larger margin. Blaine Casey had a smaller margin. In the memo, I have included a summary of the overall financial picture, expenses and revenues. We do have engineering and design and some project management expenses that are more or less fixed. There are some variable numbers, but those are more or less fixed costs. And then we have the construction phase. As far as the revenues, those are all outlined as well. Following through with those two contractors that did come in under the budget, we had, let's see, where, how do I approach this? It seems so easy when I put it on paper, right?
Well, are you talking about the recommendation of a preferred proposer which shows the. Well, are you talking about the recommendation of a preferred proposer which shows the two lower bidders?
Yes.
So actually, this was a transparency summary that I asked Eric to put together because I wanted to make sure, since we were extremely close in terms of where we would end up with this project, and I was concerned about either a deficit or a need to expend completely upfront towards the project, our contingency, I wanted to make sure that we knew what the pathway was and if there would be any financial impact in the following year, of which there will be, but it's been minimized, and we'll talk about that.
Yeah, great introduction, thank you.
And just one question for anyone else who might be reading this. When we're talking about FY '19, well, you have '19 to '21, so that's over.
We have ranges, yes, on some of these.
Okay, the current year that we are spending money out of is the fiscal year 20.
Twenty.
And if it, so if it says it's fiscal year 1920, that's money that we've already had town vote for?
Yes.
And if it's for something that says fiscal year '21, that would be something that would be from a future budget that the town would have to approve?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Well, a future revenue source.
Yes.
Some of those revenues that were expended for this fiscal year will be carried forward into the next year.
Absolutely, a particular bond proceeds that we don't have in hand yet.
We're not starting over, I just.
Yeah, no.
No, but just we have money that's been approved, and then there's going to be some small amount that we will have to have approved coming from some place, which we don't know where yet.
Yes.
It could be from increased revenues, it could be from carryforward, it could be from raising taxes. Okay.
Yep, all possibilities. So this assessment was put together, as Bruce said, to summarize the expenses and the revenues over time and give an idea of where we fall. We did have to be a little bit creative in how to, how to look at this. If we, with this proposal, we included over time a number of additional alternate items, some of which are absolutely necessary and important to accomplish as soon as possible, especially if they relate to the construction days of the project. We would not want to defer those. That would be very expensive and costly and might not even be able to be accomplished if they were deferred. So we looked at this objectively and took the base project, and if you look at just the base project and look at the recommended additional savings or expenses that might have come through from the individual proposers, we have basically $687,000, excuse me, $103 and change for the Blaine-Casey, and we have $638,551 for S.J. Wood. So that's the initial, first initial difference, and the two base proposals that came in. Looking down to the next line in this discussion, you see that we have the alternates, and I started to talk about those. Those are those items that we may want to add but don't necessarily have to. Items one and three, I felt, were essential to the construction phase, things like adding a heavier-duty vinyl siding, things like adding drywall to certain wall portions. Those are the two items that I thought needed to be accomplished, and those had associated costs of $1,717 for Blaine-Casey and $3,098 for S.J. Wood respectively. The other item that we did allow for was for contractors to make recommendations about variances, things using different materials, saving money by, if they wanted to substitute one item for another. S.J. Wood did come in and recommend $3,000, roughly $3,153 in variances that I believe were appropriate and would add value to the project. That gave us an overall net for the project as we'd like to see it accomplished, or as I would like to see it accomplished, this fiscal year for construction, of $744,953 for Blaine-Casey, $744,000, $178 for S.J. Wood. So, let's see, that's about a $38,000 difference, I think, but I'd have to go down a little bit further. Following that, we looked at some of the additional expenses that we have for engineering and got a subtotal. That's the first total expense for the project. Moving down from that, we have the revenue lines, and I want to explain those briefly. We have bond proceeds, $550,000. We've already engaged, I have been working actively with our bond council through Priti Flaherty to initiate that process. The applications are due February 12th, and we're on track to readily meet that goal. This meeting is part of that process. Use of the undesignated fund, we did authorize at-town meeting last year $235,000 to be used out of the undesignated fund. That remains intact and will be available. We did look at use of library reserves, and that, we don't have anything available now in large part because the money was already spent on the types of projects that we were hoping would be finishing work, the renovation of the downstairs, the curtains, the heat pumps, and other cosmetic work. So I'm happy that that work has already been done in advance. There is additional work that needs to be done with respect to an access on the second floor, maybe some additional drywall work and flooring work on the second floor. Those things, I'm hoping to take care of in future years, but that's one reason why we had originally discussed the possibility of having reserves. I thought it appropriate to mention here, but also to say that that money has been expanded already on the project in some areas. Use of fire department reserves, excuse me, we do have $44,700 available between the construction reserve that we had established several years ago for the fire station that hasn't been expanded so far, as well as funds from a paving reserve that we can use for offsetting some of the cost of the parking lot improvements and grade changes around the new building. So those are additional funds that we have available. The fire department donations, this is a wonderful thing that we have coming towards us. We have a commitment for $25,000 from the fire department auxiliary already, and a commitment to pursue an additional 25, if not more, and I'm hoping that we can exceed that. I've talked with Lee a number of times about this, and the fundraising they do every year is consistent, and we don't believe there will be any difficulty reaching that additional $25,000 goal between individual donations from residents and people who have interest in our fire station expansion. And the last item would be the use of contingency from FY '20. That's the current fiscal year, and that, I believe, is a reasonable, safe amount of use of those funds to help offset these project costs. With all of that tallied, we have a surplus, if we were to work with S.J. Wood of $2,366, excuse me, of Blaine-Casey, of $2,366 and $33,022 for S.J. Wood. So that's the first kind of subtotal we want to discuss. This doesn't include a contingency at this point. We have construction costs exclusively, engineering costs exclusively, and no real ability for an overage. With those margins, that was my first true indication that we may want to carefully consider looking at S.J. Wood as the preferred, as far as the financial components of this go. But we also know that we want to accomplish other items, and so I did look and say, well, what if we were to accomplish all the things that we wanted to in that add-alternate list, the items that we're deferring, as well as $10,000 for appliances and furniture, which seems to be a modest but reasonable number for outfitting the space? That would actually put us in a deficit position with Blaine-Casey of $23,453. However, we would still potentially have $6,000 and change in surplus with S.J. Wood, again, without a contingency. My hope is that we can act over the next, excuse me, over the next six months with funds that we have available and work towards developing that contingency through two places: the budget process and also through potential additional fundraising if we were to work with the library or fire department to exceed some of those fundraising goals that we currently have. You mentioned some of the potential sources to the budget process. The contingency is another possibility. Prefer not to use that if possible because that comes from the undesignated fund and goes back into the undesignated fund if it's not used. However, we could also raise an additional $50,000 or so through the capital projects reserve that we had utilized, that same $235,000 that we raised last year. I believe that we've come very close to being able to complete this project and have a very solid basis to move forward. I want a contingency, we need a contingency. I think that we could safely move forward with S.J. Wood and have a contingency up until we decide to expand additional funds or we have additional revenue coming through in FY '21. So I've kind of gotten to the recommendation, final recommendation phase, and I do have a specific recommendation at the bottom of this page that includes not only the financial component, but also the qualification piece. I want to make that clear. And my recommendation is that the town work with S.J. Wood to complete this project by approving the contract, or the bid, or the proposal, excuse me, in the amount of $744,178 to include the base proposal and alternates one and three, and also to consider the other additional alternate items at such time as we have more comfort and ability to fund them without depleting the available buffer that we have, which at this point would be around $33,000 for the fiscal year that we're currently in. And the last note I would like to make is that we did, throughout this process, try to ensure that the best interest of the town were being adhered to and that the outcome was in the best interest of the town. I believe that S.J. Wood can accomplish that, and I believe that we do have the flexibility to make that decision despite some of the issues with the proposal process. That's my summary, and I'm happy to take any questions.
What I'm going to do at this point is ask that the board defer any questions or comments until we hear any from the public. This is a large project. We voted two very sizable pieces of revenue in 2019 to fund this project, and I want to make sure that if members of the public have any questions or comments, that we hear them. So is there anyone that wants to talk about the project, or any of the guests that are here from the engineering side? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Lee, just very simply, because you're appearing here under the revenue in fire station donations, and Eric has spoken eloquently that you can manage that.
He's good for it.
I want to make sure that I hear it from, from the person, and that, you know, and additionally, that we're not undercutting your source of being able to, you know, raise that money each year, and that you're confident in regards to it.
Right now, there is $25,000 in the Reedfield Firefighters Association savings account, EMI, to be donated to the town of Reedfield for the fire station addition. We're pretty consistent on, we send, you guys get the letter we send out every year, providing this goes the way it's supposed to go, that letter will be going out and basically asking for more, more funds to help fund the addition. There's also a few other spots, you know, where they say, a bird in hand's worth two in the bush. I do have, radio going on, I do have a soft commitment from, from an individual that has some interest in us expanding the fire station, and that would be, there hasn't been, it's, he said it'd be more than, more than 10, less than 50, so.
Yeah, I advise it.
So I think with the 25,000, that's in the association savings account now, with the anticipated donations coming in from this year's letter, and then hopefully the donor will, you know, come to the front and we see that, I think another 25,000 is feasible on top of the 25, let's say.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. I just wanted to hear that directly from you.
Not going to mention anything about horses.
Any other questions? Okay, let's open this to board discussion.
No else.
Or does somebody want to put a motion, so we can discuss a motion?
First, I'd just like to.
I know, I know you sat through a big part of this process, and I want to personally echo Eric and thank you for representing the board in that regard.
Actually, got a chance to do something, which feels good.
Yay.
It's been exhausting process. I think Eric has done a great job. I truly believe, given the documentation that you have here, that we have a clean process in terms of the acceptability of the way we undertook it. Minor objections from bidders aside, I think the town's position is protected, given the fact we have three opinions that say we are. I think we're defensible. I like the concept of the presentation for the preferred bidder. I just have one question for the board in terms of the last sentence in terms of the variances. You know, "Final contract document be developed and executed. Alternates two, four, and five could be accepted pending available funding." I don't know whether that creates a cloud in the next year's budget process because it creates, instead of saying may, I think we should say shall be accepted with language that says, with that number that we're looking for, put that in there. Shall be at two, four, and five, shall be expected, accepted pending realization of avail, of funding totaling or in the amount of boom. Then you've got the whole process, and there's no gray area.
So locked in at the price that was proposed.
Well, let me, but let me ask a question for that, in regards to that. Eric, on two, four, and five, accepted pending available funding, was that to come out of that $50,000 contingency? Was that, was that the overage on that? Or were you thinking this was $70,000 or so?
I would think it would be out of the, out of that $50,000 contingency. I think that having that, I mean, with S.J. Wood, we would have a buffer to begin with of $33,000, which is a healthy start. And certainly could get us most of the way, if not all the way, through the process. This is a project that will certainly have some surprises, they all do, but I think that the engineering work we've done in advance has helped greatly minimize that risk. The geotechnical studies, the design work, all of that has helped minimize that risk. Materials prices, you know, that, most of those, they've bid on and are fixed. The labor costs bid on and fixed. It's those things that come up, like if there's a broken collar at the library that we have to address, things like that. So I guess my hope would be that we would, we would tie that to available funding out of the FY '21 budget.
The contingency amount we're going to ask for.
Well, I'm not sure I would necessarily call it a contingency. I mean, I think that if we.
Well, what we're trying to do, not to quibble about wording, is we're trying to build, we're trying to build contingency capacity next year.
Yes, and the potential to do things like that fire escape on the second floor of the library.
Right.
And the good thing, I think, about pursuing it with, as a broad capital investment, building investment request, is that that money would stay in there as a carryforward and could be used for other building projects, including perhaps the parking lot out front here, it could expedite some of those efforts. Having that be a broad capital request gives us buffer capacity, gives us capacity to complete some additional work, and also would allow it to stay in. So I, I guess, yeah, I think that's a great way to approach it.
Getting, getting back to your specific amount, Ralph, it's around 17K. Getting back to your specific amount, Ralph, it's around 17K is what my back of the envelope says on those three add alternatives.
Yep.
And the bottom line is if we were not to approve this through the budget process, then we wouldn't do those things.
That's right.
Right. They're off the table.
That's where we go.
Okay, so it's 17,000 plus the 10,000 for appliances, so only the 17,000 applies to the actual... Who would be buying the appliances? Would that be coming through S.J. Wood or is that something the town is going to purchase?
That would be the town because we didn't include any of that purchasing in the proposal process.
And I'm willing to go to the bat for that anytime. I mean, if we're going to have a fire station that needs a sink, we have to put in a sink, you know?
And a table to sit at and chairs to put at the table.
Especially when you've got 40 people sitting here in the middle of the ice storm.
Right. Okay, so I actually really like what you said, Ralph, that it should be, shall, and we'll put an amount in, which would be 17,044. Is that correct? Is it truly just taking out the 10,000?
What I can do is...
I think it's on the next page. It's two, four, and five.
Well, it depends on which bidder, of course.
Well, if it's S.J. Wood, it's 38, 34.
Right.
I have no paper.
All right, give me the numbers.
So, it's 38, 34 for two.
Okay, yep.
And four is 58, 20.
Yep.
And five is 73, 90.
Okay, nine, 11, 14, 4, 1, 9. You said 58, right? So, 17, 2, 7, 9, 12. I've got 17,344. Someone should do it with a calculator.
Nope.
Did I miss it?
No, because you had in here, we're off by 300 for in there, but that's fine.
Okay, I missed a number, but is there a number in there listed?
27, 044.
Oh, okay, so...
So, 17, 344.
Yeah, so I trust that that math less than 10,000 is more than my paper math. Let's go with that.
Why the guy using the pen?
It's 17, 344.
That's what I had come up with when I added it up on paper.
We'll go with that.
I mean, we could just accept those items in the amount specified by the contractor.
There you go. And then I have a couple of questions for the gentleman that came from Deerago in Mainland. Since you came, I don't want you to go away feeling like we didn't even pay attention to you. Not really, but... So, we hear about change orders and the inevitability of finding things that weren't planned on. Can you just give me a little bit of an idea of how specific the plans are that you have drawn up and the types of things that a contractor would come and say, oh, well, I read it this way and you mean it that way and then that's another $2,300? These are not super detailed plans, correct? Or are they?
Tom Perkins with Deerago. No, we believe they are sufficiently detailed to adequately display the design intent and what is fully required by the contractor to execute the work. I can say that change orders tend to vary by the types of projects and these are both of the projects that we have, the two fire station additions and the library project are renovation projects and inherently those type of projects have a little more risk because sometimes you're just going to find some stuff and nobody knows what's hidden inside a wall or up in the different areas that we just, something that we just didn't see, just didn't anticipate. That's why we need to have a construction contingency to deal with those things. Our role as we support the project through construction is to make sure that as those things come up, that $2,300 is a $230,000 or something crazy. It needs to be fair and equitable to both parties, both the town and the contractor to get the work done.
And how did we come up with the 50,000 as our contingency? Is that a standard formula based on the total price of the project?
It's honestly kind of a gut check and for a project like this, I would say it's probably bare minimum just because of, it is a renovation project or two renovation projects. Honestly, I'm less concerned given the age and what we're able to see at the fire station of surprises there and the geotechnical work that we did to see what's under the ground. I'm less concerned there as I am with the library roof, but nonetheless, it's important to have a adequately funded contingency and, you know, at the end of the day, the worst thing that happens is we have a surplus to carry forward to the next capital project.
Okay. That takes care of me. Anybody else?
You said that's a minimal contingency. What would be an average contingency on a project this size?
For renovation work, I'd love to see 10% of the total project value in a contingency.
Which is around 80, right?
But, you know, I think that what we've established at $50,000 is reasonable.
Okay.
We have the 33s.
I'm just, I'm looking at that firehouse, what little I know from the little time I've been here.
Good point.
It's a pretty basic building that was built right to begin with. I'm not, I'm not too worried about finding surprises there in terms of bearing wall structure that we're going to attach the new building to and all of the site development work for the septic system and all the rest has been done and that came back favorable. As you said, I would be more inclined to worry about a very old building, post and beam structure where you're going to put a new roof on it and hopefully those top bearing plates are going to be able to support it. We believe they will, but that's where I think the risk is. I think 50 is acceptable, given what we know about the condition of the firehouse.
Well, as Christine just pointed out to me, with the 33 surplus, we're really kind of around there.
We're there anyway.
But I think Eric's plan was to hopefully utilize that to pay for the alternates.
Some of the alternates, yes.
But that won't happen until the end. We'll know whether we have it or not.
Well, I don't know that it's the end, but it is certainly after the town meeting vote in June.
Yeah.
So, I would be more comfortable asking for the additional amount of the 27 from the town and the 50,000 as the contingency so that you actually have that 83,000 as contingency. And as Eric said, if we don't use it, it's dedicated money and it will be put to other building projects, so we wouldn't be asking for that money on another thing. But if we do get to a point where something untoward is found in the library roof and it's another $40,000 and we don't have that much in contingency, we have to kind of stop or have a special town meeting or take it out of our board contingency, which to me kind of signals that we didn't plan ahead enough.
Well, your roof is how much? 105,000?
On that bid it is.
Right, for the library.
So, if we have a contingency of 50, that's 50%.
Well...
But that doesn't include any contingency then for the fire station.
Yeah, but we've already gone round and round. The really big problem is going to be the library.
I will say that right now, with the current draft of the budget, I have included that $50,000 and right now we have just a small deficit as far as the balancing act that we perform every year, keeping the mill rate the same. Flat mill rate right now with a, our current overlay is about $15,000 and normally we want it to be 20. That $50,000 is currently absorbed in that budget. That capital investment is absorbed in there currently flat. So, it's been a little bit of a stretch to get there. I think we could potentially stretch a little bit further. We could certainly, I think, add another 25,000 and not, especially if it's going to stay in the reserve. We do have our draft audit. We've seen that we have pretty healthy balances. We're being very conservative in how we proceed. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I'd be fine either way.
So, yeah, I guess that's a good point. I think where we are in this conversation is we do know we need to include something in the FY '21.
Absolutely.
Budget that is of, again, creating contingency ability and we'll deal with that in the budget process. I think that's reasonable to say that we now know that that is a priority we're going to sign dealing with. So, I don't know if we need to get into that funding specifically too deep at this point.
I would think as a percentage of total budget, either capital or budget total, when you're asking for that amount, it's a minor, minor amount. It's not even 1% of total budget.
Absolutely.
To give you the comfort zone you need, to make sure that the project comes in clean and you accomplish all the objectives that you set out to accomplish when you told the taxpayers you're going to do it to begin with.
Yeah.
Well, I can take a stab at a motion if you'd like.
And Catherine, that is the correct.
So, are there any more questions that anybody would like to ask? I guess we're good at this point.
Thank you.
Well, I think we're going to get into the motion. So, Catherine's...
Catherine's winding up.
Catherine's going to take a plunge into the deep end.
I'm going to do it mostly since it's written there. Kirsten, Kirsten, sorry. So, I would move that we accept the proposal, the bid proposal, received from S.J. Wood as the preferred proposal, approving their base proposal along with alternates one and three and their recommended variances in the sum of 744,178 and that a final contract document be developed and executed. Additionally, we are accepting alternates two, four, and five in the amount of 17,044 that they shall be accepted pending future funding in FY '21.
And just to, before you complete that, was it 17, 344 or did you say 17, 44?
I said 17, 044 because the town manager just told me that is the correct number.
Okay, great, good.
He recalculated.
Thank you.
I did.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone need the motion read back to them? Okay, we're open for this. What's that? You want to read it back because you got it all?
She's got it on tape.
No, it's on tape, right, okay.
Lovely.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Congratulations to everyone involved, especially to the fire department and the library. You're going to get your stuff. This is a big day.
Thanks, Lee.
Additional comments or discussion to the motion? All in favor of the motion? Is anyone opposed to the motion? Motion passes.
Let's build something.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone who was here for that particular item. We're going to move on to commercial hauler license renewals. Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Do you want to take a one-minute recess?
It's been asked to have a one-minute recess, so we'll have a two-minute recess. Okay? If I can have everybody's attention, we'll move on to 20, 067, which is to consider commercial hauler license renewals. There are two in your packet. One is for James Diamond and the other one is for...
Simmons Trucking.
Simmons, right?
And I appreciate these coming in. Both have paid their fee. The one item that is missing from Simmons would be the proof of insurance. I would appreciate if the board could approve the issuance of these permits, subject to the submission of any final documentation, specifically the insurance certificate for Simmons Trucking.
And what were the two that we did last week? Was it Archie's?
Archie's and Galush.
Galush.
That's right, yeah.
So, have we heard from J&amp;A or from Troyano?
Troyano, we have not. J&amp;A, I think, Mike said he saw them once last week and we're still waiting on them to get their paperwork in.
Okay. So, they're still planning on submitting?
They're still planning on submitting and like I said, this is not a critical need, but it's something that we want to do as a housekeeping item and ensure that we've got people that are meeting their recycling and waste disposal obligations in order to continue to use the facility, so.
I would make a motion that we approve the commercial hauler annual permit that we received from Simmons Trucking and from Jim Diamond. Did I get the right two?
Yes, you did.
Pending final submission of paperwork.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Review the ad hoc parks commission organizational document. So, in your packet, you have the original memo, which is from March 3, 2019, which created...
17.
Excuse me?
17.
17.
Sorry.
Created the ad hoc parks commission with the purpose of going ahead and taking a look at, having representation from Conservation Commission, it's Rails Commission Committee, excuse me, Recreation Board, Select Board and Town Staff. And it details out its organization administration and its tasks. So, my comment on this to begin with is I don't think this particular ad hoc committee has been active to the extent that I had hoped it would be. We lack a chair, is that correct?
We lack pretty much everything. We had one great barbecue in the summer of, or late summer of, I think, 2017 or 18 and then just couldn't get a cohesive group together. Everybody wanted to participate, but nobody wanted to take any ownership, which is understandable from a committee of committees.
Right.
Which, and that really was, I think, what caused the, basically, dissolution of that effort. I hope we can try it again. I hope we can continue the dialogue. It might not be through this structure or this approach, but I think that the discussion around town properties, including conservation lands, including the public beach, including the fairgrounds, are all very important to have. I know that many on the board feel the same way, if not all. So, to me, the means, we can take different approaches to that, but the ends, we need to figure out how to work collaboratively better to meet the needs of the public with these wonderful recreational resources we have.
You know, the conservation works with trails and they work with the beach. I mean, the beach works with recreation. They do work together, so it's just no one wants to take ownership of...
Well, there's, they do work together and they don't. I mean, there's a certain amount of partitioning that has happened and that's inherent when you have separate committees. Everybody wants to have a separate charge, a separate piece, a separate responsibility, whereas I believe that they all have the same responsibility of providing wonderful resources for our residents to enjoy. It doesn't always happen the way that I think it could or should or as efficiently as it could or should. So, that's the issue I think that we're trying to address.
Can we have it like the Refill Enterprise Fund where we have a Select Board member on the committee?
I think that would be excellent if that's the approach you take, yeah.
I think if you had that person on the committee, it's easier to bring it together.
Yeah, well, and I mean, I guess, I want to argue with that, but I would also note that, you know, ad hoc committees are, serve a singular and limited purpose usually. And so, my thought was that when, and I had quite a bit of input, I guess, into the creation of this, was to create this ad hoc parks commission that I would hope grow into a permanent parks commission. But if we can't coordinate at this level, then maybe we need to take a look at, you know, those committees working together where it's appropriate and detailing any concerns that might arise. And there isn't, I would say right up front, there really aren't turf battles. We're not talking about that kind of stuff.
No, 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 no.
We're talking about more coordination of efforts. And of course, the town manager does a lot of that coordination. So, I'm not sure we actually need to continue the ad hoc parks commission, at least in its design, as noted here, although I will say that I'm willing to be very much corrected on that by other board members or the town manager, if other people think that there really isn't the strong need. manager, if other people think there really isn't the strong need.
Well, let me go off on the deep end. What if you took and combined conservation, recreation, and trails into one committee? We'll just take that.
Yeah, I, I think, I do, I think, I think on that.
That's a big leap.
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Yeah, there's, there's historical reasons for why different committees were developed, and some of them work in very different ways. For example, and I, I know that the, the Conservation Commission gets its hand dirty, hands dirty with some work, but the Trails Committee, for example, really gets their hands dirty, and so they do a lot of, if you will, heavy lifting work. And the beach, or I should say, the Recreation Committee is much more connected with youth and youth projects, and so on and so forth. So I think you have different pieces of expertise that are unique and needed in those groups, and that if you ended up with a committee of 35 people, you'd lose a, you'd lose a great deal. And if you tried to address those three different issues with a seven or a five-person committee, you would lose some expertise as a result as well.
So that was the reason I suggested that, was to have you state that?
Thank you.
So now that we know how diverse they are, what would be the point of bringing them together at all?
Well, and, you know, and I, and I would further, just Christine mentioned having a select board member on it. I think that's always useful, and particularly in guiding. I will say that I worked with the ad hoc solar committee, and I was the designated person there, that no one else stepped forward to exert any leadership.
Right.
Plenty of people exerted their input and so on and so forth, and that's all well and fine, but I really needed some other true leaders to, to emerge from that process. And if you take it out of the realm of the select board being responsible for it, in terms of actually leading a project, and put it into ad hoc, you're doing that because you really want to hear and listen and get expertise from a broader, if you will, a broader group that's not heavily handed oversight from the select board itself. Good speech?
I, very good speech.
Good speech. Sean, did you want to say something?
Absolutely.
Please do.
Hi.
Hi, Sean.
This is the rec board.
Hi.
I don't know how long I've been on rec board. You guys must have that somewhere. I have never heard of this before tonight, and I'm not here for this reason.
Okay.
But I, I'm here for the next reason on the, the listing there, but there's definitely a need for us to not always have to go through Eric to communicate. And I would say that, especially speaking for the rec board, I hope you guys are all watching, because I know they watch every time I'm here, that we are all new. You know, we are a very new rec board. We're very committed. We've got a lot of great new energy, and I think that there would definitely be people that'd be willing to step up and help with this part. And I think, like you said, Eric, that there, this is for the betterment of town property and town programming, and through more recreation in town, and able to use spaces and develop program. Rec board doesn't have to be a youth program. It just so happens we're a bunch of parents, and we're really good at working with our kids. But we do have interest in doing other parts, too, like Heritage Days. However, we can't attend because it's during our Winter Fun Festival, sorry.
Yes, that's right, the 23rd, yes.
But we will definitely, we would look to how can we develop other programming, too.
Great.
So maybe there is something still necessary here.
If it would be the pleasure of the board, what I would offer would be to ask for a reconvening of the ad hoc committee, and ask the committees to send representatives, and I would offer either myself or somebody else would like to volunteer to, to facilitate, if you will, a conversation of what this might look like down the road. How's that sound? Does that sound good?
I'll be there.
Okay.
Ralph, what did you have for input?
Well, I was, I was just thinking, maybe the, the initial approach was redefined in terms of maybe asking the individual participants to look at the charge, and then, on their own, within their own bailiwick's, define how they feel their relationship to this concept would work. Then, once you have mission statements or vision statements from each one of them, then you can put them together with a select group of representatives. Maybe it's the same representative concept, but at least you've got a jumping off point where you say, this one thinks this, 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 and now you've got, now you've got some concrete examples of how the amalgamation might function. And that would give you a jumping off point in more directions, so that you're not just, oh, my God, this is, this is huge. Where the heck do we start? How do we do this? I don't know whether that has any value or not, but it might be an alternative approach.
It's a good point, and I, I guess I would add to that, that if I were to be involved in the facilitation, that doing some upfront kind of communication work, whether it's specifically that, or whatever, to develop a feedback list is really important.
Maybe that direction could come from this board, to the individual groups in a very broad-brush fashion. Here's, here's the vision, here's the blue sky. What's your piece of it? With the idea of tying a big bow around it at the end, and coming up with a common approach to things that will enhance everyone's mission as far as the town's concerned.
And, and actually, this document is what that is.
Yeah.
This document is what that is, so I'd almost think that those boards and commissions could perhaps do a friendly edit rewrite of this document. Help self-define or refine the overall mission.
Take ownership of their chunk and.
I would offer anecdotally that as the administrator and sort of director of the Heritage Days, and then the Reedfield Festival, having, having a coordinated place to contact all of these commissions together would prove extraordinarily helpful because of the dissemination of information. You know, last year's, we, we want to do something on the Trails this year. We would love it if the Trails Committee was involved in that. It seems like a natural thing. But we, you know, part of Heritage Days is, you know, we're, we want these things to happen, and we're going to have a, you know, meeting on those and discuss that. But I think having a centralized way of explaining and, and sort of meeting, I know it's another meeting, but, but these groups do so much in the town that it, that it almost doesn't make sense not to have them somehow communicate better together. So this mandatory sort of commission would solve that issue for me, certainly.
Yeah. Under the tasks part is where it, it lists that, and I think what Ralph was saying is if people came to a first meeting with some ideas already, then you're not just spinning your wheels, kind of, at that first meeting, so it's more work-centered. And I, I would take that a step farther, what Dennis said. I think if you're going to have heritage, since we have Heritage Days, I think all of these groups need to be involved. It's not a question of are they going to be involved. It is that how are you going to be involved? So that we get people out to see all of the things that the town offers, and, and anytime you do that, you build all sorts of relationships. And you gain membership, and you gain a sense of community, and it's all, it, this could be tied in with our comprehensive plan? Is that what we're going to run again?
Yeah.
We are.
And so I, I think this can maybe be a piece of that, because that, we hope, is going to take place in the next two years. Start, for two years, starting later this year.
Well, if we gave the committee people this document again, and they could come with their ideas, this would be the base to start, and they can.
I'm happy to facilitate the conversation, but unless someone else is just dying to do this.
Nope, I got mine.
And I, and I know when you speak first, you end up where you're.
Well, I already do Solid Waste. Dennis already.
Okay, that's okay, that's okay.
As Heritage Days.
I already chair, actually. But that's okay. I think we're done. I've got, I've got the feedback on that. Probably I would invite somebody as a user from the Heritage Days to join me, because I think that would be.
I'd absolutely.
No, I think, I, since that's the best customer of all.
I could write his Post-it notes, and you guys could cook up a great activity.
There's always refreshments, buddy.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that, and I'll, and I, and I will report back. This won't be a, a front-burner project. It'll be a middle-burner project.
Middle burner.
In other words, we're going to be working on it, but don't expect a report back in two weeks.
I like that.
Okay, four weeks.
Something like, something on that order, probably four to, four to eight weeks.
That's aggressive.
Discuss funding and management for the Reedfield Beach, Eric.
All right. I'm bringing this forward in conjunction with a couple of, of different things. One, one being the energy of the, the rec board. They have been very enthusiastic about wanting to try to perform more activities down there, looking at maybe doing something this winter. They have been assisting extensively with, with the management over the past three years, as we have tried three different models on how to try to accomplish this goal of providing a wonderful community service. However, we've come to a couple of, of realizations over those three years of trying. One is that we don't necessarily have the membership that we would like. We don't.
The membership of what?
Of, of just the number of people using the facility.
Okay.
We're not, we're not seeing.
Pulling per, permits for the season?
Well, permits, but also our, our program. We've, we've tried to get swim lessons going. We've tried to do other activities, and it's been a real struggle to get programming happening. And there's a kind of a, a balance between who attends the beach, and then who goes to the programming, and how it all works. Sean Keegan has been very helpful in securing staffing, and we've tried having a paid superintendent that runs the beach and runs the programming. We've tried having the, the rec board essentially act as the volunteer manager, working with paid and unpaid staff, and we've tried, you know, something in the middle. And the, the biggest issue I see is the, the lack of funding, and that is in part tied to membership, but it's the chicken and the egg, programming and membership, membership and programming. In the end, though, I think it really goes back further to 1987, when beach passes were $40 for a family. Now, we have a minimum wage that's gone up 20% in the past two years, and one of our major costs at this facility is labor, and we have family passes that are $40. I did the math on CPI on the inflation, and if we were to keep pace from 1987 to now, we would have an $80 pass for the family. So we're kind of in a quandary about what we do, and how we improve the operation of that facility, how we make it more accessible to the public, how we get more people involved, how we have more programming, how we have a better community resource. So that's kind of why, why this is here, why I want to talk about it. I know the board has been discussing this in the past about with budget process, about do we make it a public resource and use tax dollars to offset because we're just not getting enough money out of permits? Or do we try to increase the permit fee and have that same user base pay more? Or do we put money into programming and hope that draws in people to get passes and pay for the, uh, programming and pay for the upkeep? We haven't been able to adequately address capital needs in this area. That's, it's one of the most dilapidated buildings, facilities we have. The, the Salt Sand Building is probably the exception.
Swap them out.
That is in, in worse condition. But it, we need resources there. We need to re-roof the buildings. The, the shed that we have is, is on its, I think, last couple of years.
It's probably not worth fixing.
It's probably not worth fixing. The best we could hope for is to rebuild something in the footprint. We don't have adequate facilities. We don't have running water. We don't have electricity, that we don't have to run an extension cord across the path to get to the other side of the green grassy area where we love to do things. We don't have a, a meeting place where people can do programming outdoors undercover. We don't have a place where people can rent and have their dedicated space. You know, my vision long-term for this beach is to have it be a functioning community resource like what we have in Monmouth, or like what we have at the state parks, where we have running water, facilities, electricity that's reliable, a place for people to meet, a place for people to rent if they choose to, a place for education, outdoor education, a place for swim lessons when it's raining. These are the things I think are very important, and we'll make, maybe some additional playground equipment, but we need to get there. We're not going to get there the direction we're headed now. We're running a deficit of a couple thousand dollars every year for the last couple of years. We're just not able to stay above water, and we need some guidance on how to, how to get ahead. And we've got a couple different directions we could go, but I really wanted to start the discussion actively and intently, and so here we are.
Please, if, go right to the microphone. Thanks.
And you have some experience with this.
I do, yes.
Imagine.
No, I forgot exactly what I was going to say.
Grace Keane.
Yes, Grace Keane, Beaver Dam Road. I was on the rec board, the beach board way back when.
1989.
We've got you listed here.
You're on the list.
Fifteen years before that. I was interested in the $40, you know, way back then, and this afternoon I called the movie theater in Augusta for a family of two adults and two children to go to a matinee during the week. It would cost $39.60 for one show.
For a ticket, just tickets?
Just tickets. Yeah, that's no food. That's just tickets to get in there.
Right.
And I, that blew my mind. I mean, $40 is nothing. I don't understand why we went from 371 members in 87, and 30 years later, you're down 200 members. The town has grown. I wonder if maybe one of the problems, when my kids were growing up, we had swimming lessons. That brought in tons of people, and, you know, they would want to stay, and people would join the beach because they were there for the day. Because I realize, you know, families have changed in 30 years, but.
I think a lot of the parents were now, so the kids don't have anyone to bring them.
Could be. Did you have a certified instructor at these swimming lessons, so when the kids walked away, they either had a Red Cross or YMCA badge?
They did.
Yeah. So just, just the lesson without that certification isn't much of an incentive anymore, I don't think.
Well, it was through the Red Cross, through the Y in Augusta.
So you had a water safety instructor there.
We did, and they had lessons all morning long. I can't remember for how many weeks, but the coldest part of the summer. Because we'd go at 8:00 in the morning and freeze.
Yeah. Well, I got a question for you, Grace. Actually, on that number, I'm not sure if this is, is an accounting difference. I mean, does members, is that member families or individual members? Because what we're.
That was families.
That was families, okay. Because we're reporting with this number, families. It doesn't include day passes, doesn't include any of that, so.
Right.
But I think that those are probably, you're probably right. Those are probably apples to apples, if, if it truly did include families.
It did.
That's an amazing number of people to be, to be signed up for that. That's amazing.
Well, there was a, there was a, a capital plan attached to it, right, to buy it, and the memberships capitalized the buy, if I understand the arrangement, correct?
Well, that, that was the original arrangement, yes. It was offered to the town, and the town refused back in 67.
That's what towns did.
And, you know, they didn't want the responsibility. They didn't want anything to do with it financially. So this group got together, and looking at the, at the group, I think there's only one member, well, it's Ed Dodge, still lives here in town. I think all the rest have died or whatever.
I think Ken Bray's still around. I don't know if he's in town.
Well, no, he's not here. He's in Nevada.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But, and then, you know, the association just kept going until one member. But, and then, you know, the association just kept going until one member that was on the board, back when I was also on the board, wanted to turn it into a private yacht club.
Like Wayne.
Like Wayne, yes, and we said, you are going to, you know, just cause an uproar if you do that. Well, they did, they did, he did. People came out and signed a petition to get it put on the warrant, and we had a town, well, the old fashioned, on the floor town meeting, where people got up and said, we want the beach to stay in town, but we do not want to have it funded by taxpayers, we want it by user fees. And, you know, so it was voted, I wish some of those people were still around town, but.
But it's, so it's been that way always?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, always with by user fees.
Since the town acquired it properly.
Yeah, well, even before.
Even before, right, it was a membership based, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Well, I think Chris may have hit on something, that family structures are different, I think we have many more dual income families where you don't have the same people around all the time. So when we're looking at programming, we may want to be cognizant of the fact that maybe first thing in the morning isn't the best time, maybe it needs to be weekend times or.
Or Saturday or whatever.
Right, or later afternoon when people can have a chance, I mean, you just don't know, you gotta try things and poll your people and find out what they want. But in terms of the fee, I think it needs to be a hundred dollars for a family membership, and your day pass has to be something more than, how much is a day pass?
Five dollars.
Five?
Five.
Five for an individual time per family.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking. Yep, I think ten for a day is probably fine, you know, that's a quarter of the cost to go into the movies, and you can hang out at the beach all day.
Right.
You could bring eight of you if you wanted as your family, but you can't give something away for free, and I think sometimes people look at something like that and they go forty dollars, so it can't be any good if it's forty dollars a year.
Right, especially if it's for three months, four months.
Right.
You know, it's a bargain, it's a steal, really.
When do we open the beach? In May?
May.
May?
Memorial Day?
Basically, yeah, when kids get out of school, Memorial Day, and then we run it through.
Labor Day?
Yeah, and then we shut down.
And then after, actually.
Yeah, after, I mean, you can get in there now if you want.
But you don't, but the beach being open, does that just mean when there's someone there, so you can go swimming? Can people still use the beach if it's like September and no one's swimming?
Absolutely, absolutely, of course.
If you're a member? If you've bought a pass?
It's just in general, it's open, yeah.
Somebody can go down there and have a pickaxe.
Yeah.
Anytime, without buying a pass?
Nine months of the year, absolutely.
Not the three in the middle of the summer?
Not the three in the middle of the summer.
I never knew that, I've lived in town for forty years, so that's new to me, so there's.
No, I never did either.
There's one thing that could certainly be publicized, and another change, I think, is a lot of people have pools now who didn't used to have pools, and I think that is another thing, and people now take their kids' regulated places on the coast and other, we're much more mobile now, so parents don't do everything right at the beach, they have other places that they go. And I don't, I don't see any problem with raising the fee so that you can do some of the projects you need, the more you spruce it up, people will be like, wow, this is awesome.
I just wanted to make the comment that when they were providing swimming lessons, that was funded by the town. People voted at town meeting to pay for the swimming lessons.
To make better, safer residents.
Right, and I, you know, wholeheartedly support that, I couldn't believe that we did not continue that, you know, through the years, it's, to me, it's important for the children.
Okay, let's, somebody else approaching the microphone.
Hi, Sean again.
Sean.
So, we would love to do swim lessons, I want you to know that's something we have put in our budget every year, it is something we have attempted every year. There's actually, last year, there was a statewide shortage of water safety instructors. The fact that state parks and the state programs can't find anybody, Eric and I have really done a lot of work, we are now a Red Cross certified beach so that we can try and pull someone in to work with us. We know this is the big thing, we've been trying. We thought we had someone last March, then April, they changed them up, you know, it's been, and so the other big piece of that has really just been the structures and how do we, and our water space. So we don't have the docks we used to have. My wife is born and raised in town, she taught swim lessons down at the beach, she remembers working there all summers, she remembers everybody used to do it, she doesn't understand why it's not that way anymore, so I know that what it had for the history, and that's part of why we've been working so hard to try to get things up and running, and I just don't think people know how crazy a shortage are for staff too, in general, out there, so.
Go ahead, Ralph.
I think it's nice that the town pays for certified person to be there, Lord knows what that market cost is, but you might, you might get a better, you might get more nibbles if you were to solicit for WSIs and allow them to charge for the lessons.
Yeah, we tried that model.
And it didn't, it didn't work?
We can't get WSIs, period.
You can't get WSIs, period, huh? They're just not.
W S I.
Water safety instructor, they're the ones that are qualified to.
Thank you for asking.
Give you your beginner, swim dad, intermediate swimmer, and all the rest, so we teach lifesaver.
Dennis?
I just wanna, I wanna make sure, yes, okay, so what we're saying is, we charge relatively a pittance now, is that true?
Yes.
Well, relatively, it's a pittance.
And we have membership dropping, so we want to raise the pittance in order to draw more people in, is that, is that what, we are saying those things?
Membership went down a long, long time ago, we're talking thirty-three years ago, so I don't think you can associate the fee with the society we had then.
Right, but we're trying to cultivate more, is that a truth?
Yes, there are two conversations, I think, happening here in this room right now. One is, how do we get more members, and two, what programming do we provide, and then what's that cost? I guess there's three.
And how do we pay for it?
Right now, there's no way for us to add, develop, progress the beach with our current state of affairs. We have tried very hard for three years to do what we can, people are really unhappy at what they get for forty dollars, you wouldn't believe how much my cell phone calls all of a sudden are long, so it's not that, just programming, it's everything, it's the goose poop, it's the length of the law, and it's the weed whacking, it's, the porta potty has too much, there's many things that management, we need to work with. I think the cost, yeah, it's ridiculous, it's been the same since I was born, so that's crazy that that's the cost still, and minimum wage is going up another buck next year, we're still gonna keep climbing, and we are not gonna get better programming, so how do we raise money, how do we develop a change now? Because it's not gonna get better, we need to invest into the beach, period.
So you gotta put something in upfront, so that when you open on opening day, you have a more functioning, appealing place that you're going to charge an appropriate rate for, not robbery, but something more appropriate than the cost of one movie.
Why can't it be free?
That's my question.
Are we gonna fund it?
Well, that's, see, that's where I'm coming from, is I see, and Sean, you've very much illustrated there were two or three different problems here, I see it as really two problems, we have an immediate funding issue to make the beach reasonably operational, okay, and there's some capital that goes along with that as well, okay? And then I think there's a whole nother issue, and that is, what is the vision of this community in regards to that public asset? And I grew up in the town of Laconia, New Hampshire, I learned how to swim at beaches, of course, we were on four or five different lakes, and there were four or five different town beaches and so on and so forth, and they were very, very busy, vibrant places, and I have no idea what they're like today, because I'm sure that populations change and so on and so forth, but I do think somehow we need to go through and exercise a really determining what our vision is for our town's jewel on that lake of Maranacook, that town jewel, if you will.
So does that fall in the comp plan?
Well, we can certainly refer to the comp plan with it, it may.
I mean, as we're reviewing it, can that be part of that conversation?
Absolutely, but I think it's also a conversation that can happen with direction from the select board as well. So I, for one, don't have a problem with, for example, what happens now with the deficit?
We have a reserve that we've been eating into, and we have been, I mean, it's been dropping the reserve from eight thousand, six thousand, after this year.
It's like zero thousand?
Well, I mean, we can probably go two or three more years that way, but it certainly doesn't, that's everything, that's the reserve for the, you know, for any capital, it's the, yeah.
So I'm, I'm kind of at a point of like, I don't really wanna raise the fee at the beach if we are envisioning something that's completely different, which may be opening that facility to wider use of the community, or more encouraged use of the community. I don't know if that's what the community will want.
Can we get some feedback for that?
I think we're gonna need to get some feedback on it. Dennis, what do you think in regards to that?
Um, yes.
Because I think you and I are coming from a point of.
Yes, I mean, if, since I've moved here, I mean, I understand there is a history, and I think you're right, the way we're doing things right now is not working. Having a fee for the beach is the way we've done things and have done things. To me, the way that we change things is that we throw it out, we invest in the money to fix it up, I mean, quite honestly, I wouldn't wanna pay forty dollars if I had to, to go under one of the palopas because I'd be afraid that it would leak on me or something, you know what I mean? That's the condition of those buildings. That's a serious conversation that I think transcends how much ever we raise, you know, to me, it's a nominal inconsequential thing, the membership. To me, it's about getting people to the beach. Having that beach be a star of our town is a no-brainer, and to me, offering access, opening it up, getting more people there is exactly what we want, whatever the fee is, it doesn't matter, it should be open, I think the beach should be free for Reed Field residents to go and be at.
Well, I, I mean, I would have a concern too, I mean, if we have a hundred and fifty-eight families paying forty dollars, that making that fee a hundred dollars, which, you know, that's reasonable given inflation, but I, you know, then if we're spreading that across eighty-five families or something, that's, you know, a real problem.
No one will pay it.
So that's what we get for it.
Exactly, I mean, that, to me, when you ask people to invest money, there has to be a return. The beach alone, with all due respect, is, again, as we've proven, because there are other great places around Maine, especially this area, where, you know, I just don't think you're getting people to pay a hundred dollars.
Go around the corner and you can swim in two places.
Exactly right, and Monmouth's beach is free, if I'm not mistaken, and I had a very long history in Monmouth, and they have really turned it into a major place, so I know that's not a paranoia.
And supportive of programming, I mean, a lot of the cost is supportive of programming, the programming basically pays for the.
Exactly right, and they have swimming there.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, if you do things, if you improve the beach and you have programs and people pay to come to the programs, the beach is open for free, but if they wanna do something special, they pay.
So what if we pay to improve the beach but still charge a fee for people who use it? There's nothing here that says we can't do it that way, but we have grease back.
I was just gonna suggest that if we're gonna totally make it free to the public, what about a town vote on it again?
That would be a requirement, I think.
I think that would be only fair, because there are a lot of people in town that don't use the beach, that probably can't afford extra tax.
But then, the flip side, I'm paying devil's advocate here, is we have the trails, and we do help fund the trails, and not everybody goes out on the trails, but everybody gets to help fund it, but we're not talking this type of expense.
Well, and the transfer station is the same way, I mean, we fund majority of the operation through taxes, and then we pay, people pay for disposal of specific items, I think there's a parallel there as well.
Or the library.
Or the library.
Probably a close up parallel.
Right, so the town pays for part and the users pay for part.
We're picking around the edges, this thing, it's a little of this, little of that, I think if we're serious about this, we need to reconstruct the entire model, and that means if it's gonna be free, will there be program pay costs that will subsidize it, it needs to be attached to a capital plan for improvements, so that any increase in user fees, such as they may be other than just coming in this room for free, are justified, so you can point to things saying, this is where your money is going. It needs to be a soup to nuts, top-down programmers, we're gonna, we're gonna change the model, here's what we envision it to look like and to be, here's the way we intend to pay for it, some programmatic costs that will come back to the town, some uses will be carte blanche, if you're a member, if you're a resident, but to just do a little here and a little there without a comprehensive plan, I think we're gonna be talking about this ad nauseam.
Forever, which we kind of have been.
Which it seems to me, we have been.
This has been floating around for probably ten years, I would say.
I would like to, I would like to have my own perspective, a vision, given the footprint, of what could be there and what people would really like, and it should be constructed based on what our vision of usership will be, picnics, concerts, swimming programs, docks, whatever, before we, before we start picking away at this one and this one and this one, all of a sudden you're gonna end up with a hodgepodge that doesn't fit anything. So I think you guys could play a key role in developing that mission and vision.
Or you may already have it.
You may have it, it may already be sitting in your hip pocket, but I think that should be the jumping off point for determining who pays, who doesn't, what it's gonna look like, and.
Yeah, and. I think a really important thing is, we need to understand what's happening this year, three months from now.
There's an immediate, there's immediate funding.
We have an immediate issue, that is, we have changing rooms that have holes in the floors that we need to repair, we have staffing issues coming up, we're down to one dock, there's a lot of things that are, I do agree that there needs to be a plan developed for the continuation, but minimum wage went up a buck last week, last month, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, I'm trying to settle our budget, and it's not gonna work.
Are these, were these part of the budget committee discussions for this year?
We haven't presented yet.
Next Thursday.
All right, so it's your turn.
Okay, just so we're not all talking over one another, Sean, were you envisioning a user fee increase this coming year?
We were gonna try at least ten dollars. That was our proposal, we were talking ten dollars.
I think, I think the commitment from this board should be at this time to support whatever the recreational board's proposal is for an increase in user fees, and, I mean, please look at the budget in a holistic fashion, I mean, if it's, you know, ten dollars is a number we can pull out of the air, but if it really needs to be twenty-five dollars in order to fix some things and so on and so forth, that's fine too.
However, we don't get that money.
What's that?
However, I don't think we will get the membership for that, because I think our.
And that is a balancing act, you do need to.
Because, you know what we're paying, you know, the biggest thing that comes out of those user fees is someone to check to see if there's a pass.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Really?
Absolutely.
It's staffing to check that there's a pass, that is where most of our money is going right now.
Really? Isn't there some other way to do it?
There is, and I know what it is.
But, no, because you still, because if you open it up, are you going to have people from Monmouth and Winter come and that's okay?
You're gonna make sure it's a rebuild residence.
I guess, I mean, I, you're starting, it's like, what if a dragon flies in and burns the beach? I don't know who will be there, but it is a clear and obvious hurdle to getting more people to the beach is paying to go to the beach. That's it, to me, it's like the forest in front of you.
But what we got here is an immediate problem.
Yes, so the immediate problem is, how can we, how can we fix those issues, how can we get that stuff figured out, so that then, if Dennis is crazy and we still continue to charge. continue to charge people at the beach, at least their money's, they're getting no holes in the change rooms.
So I would almost propose that then, if we look to go free, that if that was an option, that whatever funding we have or what's ever left in the budget for this year is used to maintain the beach for this year.
Is that the six thousand dollars that's left there?
There's not that much left, but...
There's six thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
Left?
As of December, probably, right?
As of June thirty.
I mean, I certainly, yeah.
But I guess one thing I would say is that if we were to make it free, that would require, I believe, a town meeting vote. That's something to talk about, discuss and strive for potentially. I would say that even if we do decide to offer this as a community service resource, that we still have passes and everybody would have to have a pass to use it. And it could be self-policing, for that matter, but, and it could be, maybe we have a five-dollar user fee that covers the pass and basic, you know, maybe it's a next to nothing cost. I don't know. But we definitely should have some way of verifying that people are residents, in fact, because we do want to have staff and we do need to have staff if we have people utilizing the beach and all that. So I think that I can meet with Sean, we can talk about this some more. My recommendation was that if we're planning on moving ahead, that we need to address some of those critical needs immediately. We can look at increasing the budget and utilizing a fair amount of that reserve on hopes that we will, maybe with increased fees or with an alternative solution such as going free, have the ability to actually finish the job and move ahead.
And you also have people who buy a pass that don't live in Reedfield, so all of a sudden you're going to say to them, you can't come?
We do. Well, I mean, that's the question. We could continue to sell those people passes.
I would point out also that we get stickers for the transfer station.
You mean the beach?
No, he's saying we already get stickers for the transfer station, so you can certainly give someone a sticker for the beach.
Oh, yes.
Right. I have something I want to say, but first, I'm going to make a motion that we extend the meeting for fifteen minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Because we're coming up on the end of our appointed meeting ending time.
Yeah.
So I think we have a responsibility here because it is the town beach, whether we're charging a fee or we're not charging a fee, that we need to do a couple of things before opening day this year. And one is, whatever the porta potty arrangement is, it can never be overfilled and smelly. So if it needs to be emptied weekly, then it is, okay? Then it needs to be emptied twice a week. Because, or you have to have two there so that they each only get half of the usage to be emptied once a week. But that's unacceptable. That building has been repaired numerous times. I don't know if it's feasible to put a new building up in the spring. You know, I don't know if that's a two thousand dollar building or is that a ten thousand dollar building?
Probably at least ten.
I was going to say, there are no buildings that are two thousand dollars anymore.
Okay, we even our little attendance station at the transfer station was five thousand. And I believe a couple of years ago, you guys got a new structure? We got a grant, right? And there's a new play climbing structure? Was it swing sets?
We were looking into it. We didn't actually, we weren't able to complete that process.
So we did not get the funding for it?
No. Well, I mean, we hadn't, we weren't necessarily a prime recipient, but there's lots of things out there that we could look at.
All right. So it's the changing room and the toilets and...
The shelters.
The shelters? Are these like the...
And the playground and the docks.
And the docks.
Does the dock need repair? I mean, we can't probably buy a new dock right now for the beginning of the year, but does the dock need repair? Does it just need to be scraped and restained? Does it need new edging? What is...
Can I interrupt? Do you mind if I interrupt?
No, not at all.
I think we're getting way down into the weeds now. I think what we need to do is ask Eric with Sean to develop a budget that meets what their opening day requirements are and then to commit this board to working on what we see as the future of that beach. And we got to do that so that in FY twenty-one, we bring forward a plan, I mean, FY twenty-two, actually, we bring forward a plan that makes sense for what the real vision is going to be for that beach. And that's going to take some community gathering of information. And if, in the budget process, you think a ten-dollar increase is part of that, that's fine. It's probably temporary.
I would love, and I don't know, I agree with you, Bruce. I absolutely agree. I think you're right. The other thing I would be interested in is some kind of, and I know you'll do this just because I know how thorough you are, but a forecast or some kind of number workup of a free to the residents. Is that possible?
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, we can calculate the cost. We have historic information, we can estimate certain things, but, yeah, I think a couple of different scenarios, and I really appreciate Ralph's suggestion of working on that vision-based planning for what that would look like programmatically and functionally from a capital perspective.
So what I was getting at, and evidently too detailed, which is fine, but I, as a board member, would like to see from you, Sean, and your group, details of what Bruce said, of what you need to open this year, so that when people are paying their forty dollars or whatever new fee it's going to be, they will come and they will go, oh, I want to spend time here.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, and I appreciate your detail.
It's okay. I can be seen for Bruce.
Okay, let's move on to twenty zero seventy-three. Could I have a motion in regards to twenty zero seventy-three, please?
What is it?
It is a poverty abatement application that was reviewed in executive session.
Yes, let me get up to the first page and I will make you a motion. Oh, yeah, right. This is a surface. How do you do this? Goodness. I would make a motion that this board denies the application for abatement that was discussed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny that abatement application. There's really no discussion on this. It's all private information. So you can discuss, yes or no, I support this, I guess is basically it. Anybody want to say anything? All in favor? Thank you. Consider pending real estate foreclosures and review the waiver process. So we were giving some pre-reading on this and my question to Eric would be, can this be tabled?
Yes, I believe it can. I would just like to say that we did follow through with the process as outlined in the policy that we currently have. And I do not recommend at this time that any foreclosures be waived for reasons of a burden to the municipality such as environmental hazard or extreme maintenance or cleanup costs or liability.
Let's tables twenty zero seventy-four till the next meeting. It's three pages of documentation to read and we'll have a quick discussion on it. We'll conduct a review of the second draft of the FY twenty-one budget. We have ten minutes to do that and I do want to do that as complete as we can. So Eric, and everybody in your packet, you have the latest version, if you will, of the budget.
A lot of information.
Oh, boy, do we.
Let me tell you about the cheat sheet.
Okay, please do.
If you go to, it doesn't have a page number, of course, but we go through the first twenty or so pages, which are the summary numbers for the year. This is the second draft of the budget. This reflects changes as recommended by the budget committee, also additional changes that I have made on the administrative level. As well as, we're starting with this one right here.
Can you turn that around so we can all see it? Oh, right, but what page are you going through twenty in? Your change list?
It's roughly twenty, so, yeah, I'm kind of getting to that. It's the page that says budget sheet summary revision history. It's a bit of an echo, Bill.
Right, it's, there's a whole bunch of items that are changes and so forth to that.
So this summarizes from, thank you, Bill, from the last time we had a meeting with the budget committee, I would say that you'd be looking at basically from the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, these are the changes that have been made. And this is a great way to look at the budget and where it's been and where it's headed. And we have changes here based on the departments that we had worked with. Small numbers in many cases, however, I will say that the biggest changes happened in the use of designated and undesigned funds and that fifty thousand dollar allocation, which will be increased for capital expenditures. Our audit gave us the assurances that I was expecting and the outcome I was expecting, that we had been conservative with our fund balance projections, and so we did have a little bit of capacity to increase and probably have some more capacity to increase that level of expenditure. Other than that, we have just small items here and there, things that may have been missed, things that were added. And I will say that right now, as I mentioned before, we have a mill rate, if we hold the mill rate flat and hold the school spending flat, we have a mill rate that is identical to last year's less, I'm trying to find the right page here, less a few thousand dollars, and that is reflected in the overlay. Here we go. So right now, with this draft budget, we have an overlay that's about thirteen thousand five hundred, anticipated to be twenty, should be twenty. We don't normally balance that until we get to the end of the process, so we have the ability to set a very fine number on the mill rate or utilize funds and only have to make changes a few times. So bottom line is that we're still very much in the range of a flat budget. What this says is that we ought to raise...
For the town.
For the town, for the town, that we ought to raise the mill rate, maybe, you know, one hundredth of a mill or something like that to make up that seven thousand dollars if it doesn't come out of other sources. So the more things change, the more they stay the same. We did have the ability to increase our spending because we had an increase in the use of undesigned funds. And that's the summary.
Yeah, and as far as the school budget goes, which will have effect on this, the select boards will meet with the RSU on March eleventh, I believe it is. Is that correct? Well, it's on the calendar anyhow. It's March eleventh, I'm pretty sure. It's a Wednesday night, so we'll be able to get some feedback from them at that time. When do we actually know what the county request is? Do we already know that? They're very predictable, actually.
We don't know yet.
But they're fairly predictable.
They are. It's two to three percent usually.
It is the eleventh.
It is the eleventh.
Eric, what was on line ten? It says increased PEG equipment. PEG is...
Oh, PEG. That's what we're doing right here in this room. This is the equipment we use to televise. And actually, that's a really good question. Bill and I met today with an equipment provider who will help us realize a four-year plan to switch over from analog equipment to digital, which happened with television ten years ago. And so now we are looking to, and Bill has been able to keep this ship going with old technology for a very long time, so he deserves a lot of credit for that. And the University of Maine system has contributed to that as well through their surplus equipment donations. But it's time, we are running to the end of the useful life of the equipment and we don't expect we're going to continue to get cable franchise fees forever. And we also expect that we're going to continue to be pushed to the hinterland and beyond in our cable listings. So this equipment will give us the ability to stream directly to a service provider of our choice so that when we send people a link to a meeting agenda, there will be a link to a website where they can watch it live. And that's what we don't have right now. We have to record and then rebroadcast on YouTube or broadcast into, like I said, the void of channel thirteen twenty-five on cable where no one's ever going to find us unless they're just looking specifically. Yeah, the diehards, there's a few of them. But this is going to improve our communication, bottom line, and Bill and I are working on a four-year plan to spend roughly thirty thousand dollars, ten the first couple of years, ten to twelve the first couple of years, followed by lesser expenditure to just wrap things up prior to Bill's retirement from our meetings.
So public access TV will still be available, but there will also be a live stream available as well.
A live stream and new management.
So there's two different ways to accomplish that.
And so going forward on this, we had talked tonight about the possibility of putting those three additional pieces in, the seventeen thousand forty-four from the fire station bid.
Yes, and the ten thousand and...
And the ten thousand for, and we also were looking at, we're going to have some capital number come from the beach.
Yes, and some of that may be able to be achieved through the current reserve, but we'll have to find out what that is when we get there.
Right. And the transfer on, the increase on the transfer station fees, does that include the recent increases that you've seen since August?
It, to some extent, it's not complete. I was not believing the incredible increase in revenue we have seen since August. It's been twenty-five percent or more month over month over month. Some months, it's been a hundred percent increase. Just staggering numbers and I want to see what it looks like. I don't want to plan on that being there, but it certainly looks real and very real. And we could potentially bring in a little bit more revenue there.
It was just something that we've talked about on the Solid Waste Committee with our budgeting and, you know, it's a possibility. Okay?
Can I be next?
Please.
Couple of questions, as my favorite subject, fund balances. Funding sources for additional revenues coming in next year, the committed fund balance, you're projecting fifty thousand, and the undesigned fund, we're projecting seventy-five thousand. What's the source of that, those moves?
That is less than what we typically see on average, and that's the projection. It's based on averages.
Past years' experience?
Past years' experience, yeah.
All right, so it's conservative, so we're pretty safe? And then the bottom line for both those balances looks pretty good in terms of what we talked about this afternoon, in terms of having two months of annual, of operating costs.
Absolutely. However, that does not include the increase that we will see from the school.
Yes.
And I think that right now they're looking at a minimum of around three percent and upwards of five or six.
We heard upwards of five, correct, but even then, I think we're in a range.
That does include the bond.
It does include the bond.
That does.
They've committed to try to hold things down, but the genie's already in the bottle with that bond and I don't believe they're going to be able to keep it less than five percent. I just, you know...
Well, they've got contractual obligations and steps and all the rest of it that are fixed costs plus insurance. It's real, not that I'm a, I won't go any further.
We'll have a good conversation with them.
Yes, we will. And then, backtracking a little bit, our taxable value went down by one point one percent this year.
It went down and it went up all at the same time.
I, well, the last number I'm seeing was down one point one percent, so what that flat mill rate is generating is less, is it, is it...
So there's a couple of things happening there. So the state changed the formula for homestead exemption.
Right. Is that all attributable to that? That's...
That is all attributed to that, attributable to that. What that number shows, that one percent one...
One point one percent.
So what that includes is a reduction of all of that value from the homestead exemption, but there's an equal and offsetting increase in the revenue that we're seeing from homestead reimbursement. So those basically equal out. We also see in that number, once we had calculated that reduction, a one-half of one percent increase in the value to account for the standard increase in values from new homes, new bedrooms, new kitchens, and all of those things that increase value.
So when we actually get to a point where you're using a taxable value to set the mill rate, it should be higher by the end of this fiscal year?
Well, that's the projection that we expect as of June thirty or July one of twenty twenty.
But on the revenue side, there is going to be...
There's offsetting revenue.
There's an offsetting revenue.
Absolutely. And most of it's coming from the...
Homestead.
Homestead. Some is from tax, but most of it's from homestead.
Do we have to extend the meeting again?
Depends on where we are with this discussion on the budget.
I'm done.
I'm done.
I'd like to take a motion about considering entering into contract negotiations, and I think the motion that we would have offered would be to, I think usually I would do that letter, right? letter, right, Eric?
Yeah, and I will say, we did receive our letter from them today.
Yeah, we did. And so if you'll direct me to write back to them, and say, basically, we're ready to enter into union contract negotiations. We don't need to get into anything beyond just getting the letter. So we get that done, and then we can appoint officials later to negotiate.
Make a motion to ask the Select Board Chair to enter into negotiations with the employees per, per standard procedure.
Yep. I mean, actually, this is a letter just saying we're ready to do it. Yep.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all, any discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question. I see that the entering into is an opt-in by both parties. So I'm assuming they wanna do it, and we wanna do it, instead of just rolling the contract for another year?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I think we will, yep. So, all in favor of the motion?
I, I just wanna say something before we go. Can I make one quick note?
Absolutely.
I just, according to the state, Thursday, February sixth, is when the Reedfield batch of the homestead exemption refunds will go out. So February sixth, we are in batch twenty, and Reedfield is supposed to, their mail